First. At this time, I'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, June 1st to order roll call.
This conference will now be recorded.
Here Calvin.
Yes.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Yes.
Meski.
Here.
Schlandt.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Sir.
Osmond.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Okay, Councilmember Alvarado, you're down to my left in low, so if I don't see you, please try to do something to get my attention. That's where you're at, at my screen, and that's where I have a little difficulty seeing. So I can see everybody else fairly well, but you're the one that's kind of in my blind spot. So if I don't call on you, just either send me a message or say, "Mr. Mayor," or something, please. Okay, thank you. With that, we'll go to the pledge of allegiance. Again, I've asked Councilmember Fagerly, as the mayor put him, to conduct that for us. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess after this last tweet, we really need this, and hopefully it takes effect on people. But I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fagerly. I would just like to, before we get into the meeting, just express my concern for our communities. We had a couple peaceful protests in Wilmer on Saturday and Sunday, and I want to thank the people that did that in an organized fashion. I know our police department was aware of that, and I know I received messages from many of the council members and also many citizens in regards to this. I know there was a conversation that happened this evening as well, and I was unable to be a part of that conversation. But people have the right to express their opinions, the speech that they have. But it really concerns me when damage is done. So I'm certainly hopeful that if we have the protests that they are done in a respectful manner for our community, to all of our businesses, and to our minority-owned businesses in particular. A lot of our small businesses are struggling because of the COVID-19, and to have additional injury inflicted on that is something that is concerning to me. So with that, we'll go to the... Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Meski. To approve the agenda as presented. All in favor? A roll call, please.
Member Fagerly.
Aye.
Meski.
Aye.
Quontis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The agenda is approved as presented. Next, we have consent items, Ms. Thompson or city clerk.
Yeah, on tonight's consent agenda for council's approval, are the city council minutes of May 18th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of May 26th, the accounts payable report for May 14th through May 27th, and for council's acceptance, the Wilmer Lakes Area Convention of Visitors Bureau Board minutes of April 21st, and for council's information, the investment Wilmer Board minutes of April 8th.
I'll move to approve the consent item agenda. Second. Motion by Meski, seconded by Fagerly to approve the consent items. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Meski.
Aye.
Quontis.
Aye.
Quontis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Consent items agenda passes. Next, we have a public hearing. The public call-in number is 320-335-7135. And as a reminder, you must dial the area code along with the additional numbers, so all 10 numbers need to be dialed. At this time, we have no public callers, but I will open the public hearing at this time and turn it over to our finance director, Mr. Steve Oken. Mr. Oken.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, for the public hearing, we're seeking permission to issue $1,965,000 worth of general obligation improvement bonds for the 2020 street improvement project. The agenda lists three action items, but due to the length of the ordinance, the second item about publishing the ordinance in summary does not need to be taken. The city clerk informed me that since it's only a one-page ordinance. So we only need two actions tonight: the introduction of the ordinance, given a number of publishers, and a resolution authorizing the sale and setting the parameters. With us tonight also is Doug Green, who can give a brief explanation of the process and where we have been and where we will go. Doug is with the firm of Baker Tilly.
Hi, thank you, Steve, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's good to be with you this evening. Yeah, I was just going to review what the three action items were, the two, of course, being associated with the city's ordinance process, and then the third one being the resolution authorizing the sale. This isn't a statutory required step in the process, it's just a good business to make sure that we're all on board. We've talked about this a number of times, it's the city's regular street improvement project financing process. But it's gone very well this year, and we're hitting the market really at a great time. So after the council considers this resolution this evening and approve, we'll send it to paper, we'll go through the 15-day waiting period, and then we will start honing in on the interest rate within the terms for the Brimmer Bank. Fully expected to, you know, be a successful sale, municipal market stays very strong, you know, there's that flight to quality back. People are looking for safe investments in this turbulent time, and the municipal market, highly rated general obligation bonds is that place. Has been passed and continues right now, so that's good for this financing. The resolution does allow the mayor administrator and finance director to approve the sale of the bonds within certain perimeters, and those are maximum interest rate of 3% and the final maturity of 2031. And doing that simply just allows its flexibility to approve the sale of bonds on a non-council meeting date. That's simply all it does. We'll still bring the results of the sale to the full council, I believe on July 6th, for its full ratification, we'll call it ratification of the full council, and then we'll close and have the money in the bank the latter part of July. So see, that's all I have at this time. If there's any other questions.
Mr. Oken, some additional comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could, Doug eloquently mentioned that we are dealing with the local lending institution of Brimmer Bank. Those discussions are that they are in conversations with the other lending institutions within town, and will offer portions of the debt to them as well, of what they are comfortable and able to afford.
Okay, in the past, and again, let me give that phone number again, a public number to call in. All 10 numbers need to be dialed: 320-335-7135. Mr. Oken, in the past, we've done a comparison between the bond market and between placing the money locally, and the council, since I've been the mayor, has chosen to place that money locally. Is that still the direction we're going, or are we just looking at placing the money locally?
We will have comparative numbers. They are slightly lower normally, but with the markets today, and Doug can maybe expand on that a little bit, I'm not sure if they will be closer to each other or not, but I think it's, has been about a basis point in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Green, any additional comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it really just depends on the market. It kind of fluctuates, and it, you know, it depends on the term, you know, the shorter the term, the more, you know, like, local banks like, they don't want to lock up their money too long. You know, it's in this small dollar amount, relatively small, you know, around $2 million, it is pretty much a wash. On any given day, you know, bonds might be a little bit cheaper. Bonds, excuse me, bonds sold publicly might be a little bit cheaper, but then you lose out on the having that investment stay within that community. So, you know, there can be a small trade-off. It's really hard to say on, you know, you can't really project which one's going to be better. You can always say on a certain day, you give a good indication which one might be a little bit cheaper, but given the relatively small size and the short repayment term, the difference is very small.
Thank you. I was just doing filler here in case anybody wanted to call in. I see that there are no public callers at this time. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring to the council table. Council, what are your wishes? Move to approve. Second. A motion by Councilmember Bowman, seconded by Councilmember Meski. To approve the ordinance to authorize issuance of $1.965 million in general obligation improvement bond, Series 2028. We have a motion, and we have a second discussion. You moved on me, Alvarado. I can see it better, though. That's good. Roll call.
Councilmember Quontis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meski.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, I request a motion for a resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation improvement bond, Series 2028. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bowman, seconded by Davis. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meski.
Aye.
Quontis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Doug, thank you for your work on this and working with the city. I do appreciate that. And I know that Mr. Oken has a lot of confidence in your firm and the work that you guys do. So, Mr. Oken, thank you for your wisdom on this as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to the Public Works Safety Committee report for May 20th. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to confirm that everybody can hear me okay. I have a bandwidth problem at my house. Sounds good. And I will or will not claim that it might be the result of three young boys being preoccupied with electronic devices. With that, the Public Works Safety Committee meeting met on Wednesday, May 20th, and I believe the time was right around 5:00 PM. Members present were myself, councilmember Osmond, councilmember Alvarado, councilmember Nelson. Others present were our city administrator, Mr. Graumanns, our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our police chief, Mr. Felton, our community end and rec director, Mr. Baumgartner, our administrative assistant in engineering, Ms. Del Bosque, and also, as a guest attendee, we had with us Ms. Catherine Huarda. The meeting was called to order at 5:06, and we kind of switched our agenda around just a little bit, and we bumped our public safety update to number one. And Ms. Huarda joined us as a party to this public safety, and this was with regards to a nuisance dog, and an incident that had taken place a few days prior regarding a dangerous animal in their neighborhood. And I was wondering if I could maybe call on Police Chief Felton to maybe just give a very brief synopsis of the incident as it took place. And then, I do believe we have subsequently, we've come up with some, come up with some fixes for this problem, so we will not need to meet in the future, but I think it would be pertinent to check with Chief Felton so he could brief us at this time on that incident, if he's available.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. A quick synopsis on it is that there's a dog that lives over in southwest Wilmer that we've had a few different complaints on, everything from dog running at large to attacking two smaller dogs. on, everything from dog running at large to, um, attacking two smaller dogs. The dog was, uh, deemed a potentially dangerous dog back in April of two thousand eighteen, uh, based on biting a neighbor dog at that time. Uh, there were specific requirements put on the dog, including, uh, um, licensing, uh, being walked only by a person over the age of eighteen and a number of other requirements. Um, in, uh, May, uh, mid-May, uh, the dog bit another dog and in fact, uh, bit it bad enough that dog, that dog had, small dog had to be euthanized. And, uh, the dog was deemed, uh, a dangerous dog, which would have thrown additional requirements, including insurance, um, wearing a muzzle, um, things like that on the dog. Uh, the owner of that dog, um, the dog that was, uh, euthanized spoke at the meeting, expressed her concern over the dog's behavior, uh, what it's done to the neighborhood and that type of thing. Um, the, the dog owner of the dog in question, uh, wanted to contest the dangerous dog, um, designation at first. I then continued with discussions with her. At this time, she's planning to transfer that dog to a relative, uh, in Texas. That relative is aware of the dog's behavior and, uh, with that, um, that should solve the problem. And there's some additional requirements that she'll have to make, um, to get the dog out of the impala to transfer down to her. And if it ever comes back to Wilmer, has to abide by the dangerous dog requirements. But, uh, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, yeah, and we did, um, I, I was pleased to see that, uh, we had it slated for our meeting officially this week, um, but then via email, it, it looked as though, uh, uh, a subsequent solution was found in terms of, uh, getting this dangerous animal out of our community and also ensuring that it wasn't going to be, uh, nuisance in somebody's new community. It sounds as though, uh, the animal is going to, uh, a safer location so that, uh, they won't, we're not just passing, passing a problem along. So, uh, appreciative, uh, of that action. Um, moving on to our next, uh, item that we have for discussion, number three, was discussing project number two thousand one dash E, the Seventh Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project Award. And a little bit of background, uh, Unique Construction is in the process of building, uh, two hundred eighty-eight unit apartment complex on Thirtieth Street Northwest. A sanitary sewer connection on the Seventh Avenue side is required to serve the complex. The city is bidding the project as it is required to be built to our standards and will be, uh, public sewer once constructed. Uh, bids were open on May twelfth, uh, after receiving eight bids, and a motion was made and seconded, uh, to award the sanitary sewer construction project to Land Pride Construction in the amount of two hundred forty-four thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and authorized signatures on the agreement. And, um, just, uh, financial impact piece, the project will be a cost share. Unique Construction will be paying for a hundred percent of the project, as I am aware. Um, that motion awarding two thousand one dash E, the Seventh Avenue Northwest Sanitary Sewer Construction Project was entered and seconded, and I will enter that now.
Second. Osmond.
Motion by Plowman, seconded by Osmond, to approve the sanitary sewer project, uh, and have Unique Construction pay one hundred percent of the fees. Question. Rule call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmond?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Quantas?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next item for discussion is actually something that we are, uh, talking about again, and this is an item for reconsideration. Uh, we've taken action on this once already, uh, but staff did, um, honor the questions that were asked the first time around and they went back and did some, uh, some calculating. And, uh, I greatly appreciate that, but then they brought it back to our committee for discussion. A little background, the city approved the obtaining of quotes for the electric baseboard heating system for the Rack Gate Building on May fourth. At the meeting, the question was asked regarding the payback for natural gas heat versus the electric heat system. After checking, uh, on that specific question, we found it to be a four-year payback as opposed to, uh, and I haven't heard if I'm recalling exactly the timeframe that we discussed earlier, but that's, uh, not an issue at this point. Uh, the rule of thumb is that payback under seven years is typically a good decision if we're going to stay at that location for a longer time or if it can be a selling point, uh, should the city decide to sell the property in the future. Um, so based on the math that's, uh, in the, uh, car sheet that we have in front of us, uh, some calculations were done and, uh, uh, we're prepared to solicit quotes. Um, the financial impact of this, uh, is as follows. Rack Gate has twelve thousand dollars in its operating budget for the conversion. Uh, if the gas system is recommended, we could use the twenty-three thousand dollars in unspent funds from the City Hall Heating Project to make up the difference of eleven thousand dollars. Uh, the outcome was made, uh, well, actually a motion was made and seconded, authorizing staff to solicit quotes for a natural gas heating source for the Rack Gate Building, um, that was originally discussed May fourth, uh, versus the electric heating system. Um, as we found the payback to be, uh, four years and, uh, taking all other criteria into consideration, that motion was made and seconded, and I will enter that motion now.
Second from Osmond.
Motion made by Plowman, seconded by Osmond. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Osmond?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Quantas?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That, uh, w- w- resolution passes, motion of resolution passes as well. Um, Councilmember Plowman, we enjoy hearing your children in the background. It means it's a happy home and that things are happening and we've all been there and we appreciate your willingness to stand in. So, you're doing an awesome job. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. That, uh, means more than you imagine right now. Uh, on to our next item, number five, and this was the discussion of, uh, Magellan's, uh, uh, pipeline coming through the city. Uh, the committee received from information, a request from Magellan to relocate the pipeline along the Wilmer Y project, and the Wilmer Y project is what spurred the discussion. Uh, the sk- the city's been given the opportunity to relocate a section, uh, of that pipeline to a more advantageous location, um, for consideration of future development, uh, out on our new industrial park area. Um, crews are being mobilized and they're going to have to be doing work on that section of pipeline. Uh, however, our city staff has been doing their due diligence and, uh, they did the estimation, uh, and crunched the numbers, and they came to the realization that in order to, uh, make that happen, uh, the cost of that relocation was gonna be about one and a half million dollars. And, uh, that amount of money is not budgeted for. Um, and we also had that, uh, that, and we took some survey, maybe look at what the new G I S map, and then we also took a little plot maps for the, uh, uh, and given all that information, we decided that, that likely would not be a cost advantageous nor a practical. This time, for misinformation's sake, uh, I would like to pay the courtesy, uh, to the council for discussion if they would like to, uh, ask any questions of our, uh, Public Works Director, City Engineer Christensen, um, myself or anybody else. Seeing and hearing none, I guess that means we move on. Uh, our final item for the evening was also an informational item. Uh, the committee received, uh, for information, a discussion, um, and this is regarding the Robins Island Water Quality Testing System that we have discussed at length, uh, in years past. Um, but city staff has churned this idea and, uh, I believe come up, uh, with a good solution. Uh, this, the discussion revolves around a, the usage of a flag system, um, as kind of a warning system for water quality, uh, for the beach, similar to the system used by the Dorrith Olson Aquatic Center, also many other recreational, um, uh, beaches, pools, uh, and whatnot. It's a, the flag system is typically, uh, pretty commonly used. Um, the system would be used in the event the beach is closed for swimming. Due to elevated fecal coliform, the flag system would use green and red flags to indicate the beach was a go for swimming or if swimming was not recommendation, uh, recommended. A sign could potentially be placed explaining the red flag, meaning swimming is not recommended at this time. And, uh, along with that, uh, signage, we also discussed the, 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 um, necessity for the signage to deliver that message in a clear and concise manner that, uh, educates the public well as to what exactly is going on when we have a red flag and when we have a green flag, uh, properly inform everybody as to the meaning of it. And we would also incorporate, um, you know, uh, uh, social media programs and whatnot, and we could, uh, rely on our new, uh, uh, contract with our local media agency to help us do that. Uh, any questions, uh, for our park director, uh, director, Mr. Baumgarn, regarding this? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Uh, that was our long, uh, and short of the meeting. We adjourned just prior to six thirty, right about six twenty-eight that evening, and I would move to file this into the minutes.
Second by Osmond.
Motion by Councilmember Plowman, seconded by Osmond to file the minutes. I have a couple of comments, uh, Councilmember Plowman. Uh, on the dangerous dog, I received a number of comments in regards to this, um, messages, uh, text messages, et cetera, in regards to this issue. And so I'm very pleased to see that our police department was able to come to a successful conclusion. Um, it's very difficult when we have to make that decision as a council, although, although that is one of the things that we are elected to do. And so this was a very good solution. So I want to commend the, uh, police department and also your committee for the work that you did on that. And then also on the Robins Island, um, um, as, as most of you'll remember, this was a, a great concern of mine last year. Uh, I did not realize you were gonna be talking about it, um, because I was not briefed on it, but it is nice to see that a solution is coming forward, uh, that will do a better job of communicating with the public in a positive manner. So, I'm very pleased to see that as well. So thank you for the work of your committee on doing that. Um, I will go back and listen to that, a conversation, because I am very interested about that. Um, and like I said, had I known, I would have, uh, uh, been on the call. So, uh, so there's been a motion made and seconded, additional discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to respond to that and tha- thank you for that acknowledgement. Uh, we appreciate, uh, that, but even more so, um, than our committee, we appreciate the work that staff, uh, put into both issues. Uh, number one, regarding the dangerous dog, um, every time, uh, one of these comes, and it, it doesn't happen super often, but when it does come, it's very difficult because, um, you know, on one hand, we don't want to be the ones deciding whether or not, uh, whether or not animals should be taken from their owners or should be euthanized, but also we have an obligation to, uh, protect our community and our community members. And, um, along with that, uh, Ms. Huarda, who was involved unfortunately in this instance, did speak, uh, with very high regard regarding, uh, both Chief Felton and all of the officers that were involved, um, with that incident, that they took it very seriously and that they did, uh, certainly do everything that they could to help that process along secondarily. Uh, regarding Robins Island, yes, I was pleased to see this was put on the agenda and the work and the research that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Baumgarn had done, along with our city administrator, in putting together a practical, common sense solution, uh, that seems like it will address our concerns, uh, for, for public safety as well as marketing and public, uh, perception and, uh, everything related to that. So, thank you.
Additional comments for the council? Councilperson Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that dangerous dog, how do we know that it won't be coming back? Does it have to have a chip put in it so you can monitor it? Are we sending a letter to the city in the other state or the county to let them know that dog is, is coming? Because you kill another dog, that's pretty bad. So, I've been around enough where I have put down dogs that have bit people. So, I mean, it seems like we're giving, not two strikes, we're giving three strikes now. You should only get one strike. The second one, you're done. Well, I think we're getting a little...
That's it? I- i- if I may, um, I do believe that this is a second strike. Um, the police chief, I, I think I would defer to him, but I, I also believe, yes, that this is a second strike and that there was a rather lengthy process in, involving quite a few, uh, ramifications and, and hoops to jump, so to speak, if, if that dog were to remain in the community. And, uh, in the past, that hasn't been feasible or, or practical. But, uh, in the chief's email, I believe he did spell out, um, you know, the, uh, the steps that would have to be taken on this one in order to actually ensure that, yes, the dog, uh, was in fact released from the shelter, but then also was subsequently removed from the area. And maybe the chief can speak to, uh, what assurances we will be obtaining for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Uh, it's still a work in progress, but right now, speaking with that, uh, um, the owner of the dog, it would include, um, the dog has already been microchipped, uh, you know, has a city warmer dog life, since current on its vaccinations, that, uh, she's gonna have to, even to get it out of the city warmer, have it muzzled. Uh, it's a relative that lives in a rural area in Texas that would be taking the dog, so it's not in another city or around other, uh, other animals, um, according to them. And we're also gonna have them, uh, fill out a letter and have it notarized that the dog has been received at that property down there, that they are gonna retain in the bed and will not return to the city of Wilmer. And then we'll also, uh, follow up with the, uh, the dog owner once she returns from, from Texas too. Thank you for those comments. Um, Chief Felton, maybe it would be, uh, advantageous to forward that email to the entire council, so the entire council has a copy of it, um, and that may alleviate some of the questioning. So, uh, with that, we have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Additional comments? Rule call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Quantas?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmond?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Uh, that motion, the file passes. Next to the Finance Committee reporter, May twenty-first, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Um, the Finance Committee meeting of the Wilmer City Council met at five P M. on Thursday, May twenty-first, um, twenty twenty via teleconference. Present were councilmembers Nelson, Plowman and Osmond. Councilmember Fagerly had requested to be excused from the meeting. Others on the teleconference were city administrator Grammets and Finance Director, Mr. Olkins. We did call the meeting to order at five o'clock. There were no action items and the discussion items were the financial report from April thirtieth, twenty twenty. Finance Director Olkins reviewed the finance report for April thirtieth, twenty twenty. Capital improvements expended to date included vehicles budgeted in the current year, as well as those budgeted but not spent in twenty nineteen that were carried over. Other capital improvements were re- reviewed, and it was noted that the robot system for the police department budgeted for eighteen thousand and the turnout gear dryer for the fire department budgeted for eleven thousand were both purchased in twenty nineteen, leaving twenty-nine thousand available for other appropriations in twenty twenty. Other capital allocations budgeted but not entirely spent in twenty nineteen have final expenditures in process in twenty twenty. expenditures in process in twenty twenty, which include Robins Island Four Seasons Building, Sperry Picklebop Court, Baker Dugout, Civic Center bleacher replacement, Aquatic Center pool bottom resurfacing, and some lift stations and Eagle Lake sewer system improvement. Questions were asked regarding the process for reviewing the excess funds remaining after the projects were completed. It was reported that as these projects become finalized, a summary report will be provided reflecting available dollars for the council to consider using for potential reallocation as needs arise. In response to questions on city hall improvements, staff explained that fifty thousand dollars was allocated each for the city hall and the auditorium for the district heat shutdown remodel plus an additional ninety thousand had been budgeted for other city hall improvements. Details will be provided through the Public Works Committee as information becomes available. There was a question on the status of the grant application for the ADA required improvements at the auditorium. Given the current pandemic issues, the grant process has not been pursued as it, but it is hoped to be addressed in the near future. General fund revenues were discussed, including property taxes, which may be delayed this year due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Licenses and permits are on track with the amount budgeted. Uncertainties with governmental, intergovernmental revenue include local government aid and shared highway aid. Service charges are areas where there may be a substantial reduction due to the shutdown. A reduction in interest earnings is anticipated since interest rates have dropped. General fund expenditures, waste treatment revenues, and expenditures, and investment and cash balances were also reviewed. The investment activity for the first quarter and current, staff updated the committee with the status of the city's investments, noting that there are, has been a drastic increase in called investments because of the interest rates dropping dramatically. Reinvestment in one to two-year certificates of deposits have ramped up because of the recent economic turn of events. Yields and maturity were also discussed. The state financial information update, discussion on the status of local government aid, and local option sales tax revolved around the uncertainties due to the economic ramifications of the COVID nineteen pandemic. It was noted that the city may also potentially be receiving an allocation of the federal CARES funds that were provided to the state for distribution to local governments. Amounts and dates anticipated to be received for all of these funds continue to be a moving target. The council will be notified as updates are received. Item number three was future agendas. It was reported that councilmember Nelson and staff, that was Mr. Okens and Mr. Gramm, attended a telemeeting with CARES Health today, on that day. Representatives from CARES Health were scheduled to present information to the Finance Committee at the scheduled meeting in June, at the second scheduled meeting in June. Other future agenda items include the Walmart Municipal Utilities two thousand nineteen audit, which has been scheduled to be presented at the Finance Committee's first meeting in June. And additionally, it was noted that there was no new council information request that had been received. The local option sales tax program was discussed at length, specific project prioritization issues, and the anticipated reduction in revenue. There was no further business to come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at six fifty P M. And I would have, make a motion to enter the minutes now, to approve the minutes now.
Osmus, second.
Motion made by Nelson, second by Osmus to file the minutes. Discussion. I'm pleased to hear that the CARES people will be coming and speaking to the council. I've had a number of phone calls from community members very concerned, and so I'm glad that the conversation did happen. I had also sent an email to the administrator asking for that meeting to happen as well. So I'm very pleased to hear that we'll be getting a report. I hope that report comes to the full council, so the full council can hear the report and have an opportunity to interact with those people as well. So with that discussion, Councilmember Nelson.
The, the meeting that was requested was to introduce Mr. Gramm and Mr. Okens to, Mr. Gramm had not met yet with them, and to meet the finance director and to review the terms of the information from the lease and to make the connection so they would do that. And so that's, I don't know if Mr. Gramm wants to speak to anything else with that, but that's what the purpose of the meeting was as it relates to the lease.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, yeah, it was a very good meeting to be able to understand who you're talking to on the other end of the phone when you call, and because they, they did have turnover and also the city had some turnover, it was well worth the time to do that, which obviously has now led to having them do a report, you know, at a future date. And I think recently they've gone through some things, the, the world is going through some things, and will probably, you know, work towards connecting more in, in the near future, probably better than, than what it was over the last six or seven months. Hopefully, some of the questions that are out in the public, you know, can get their answers and people feel comfortable with what's going on.
Mayor Calvin? I didn't, I think Councilmember Swantus had a question, too.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Swantus.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I was going to ask a question if we could have them present to the full council. I, I would also be very interested in, in hearing what is happening there, and it would be nice to meet the new folks as well. So I'd like to see that a full council conversation, even maybe greater topic than what was described.
Additional discussions or comments? I'll just, I'll just pass on some of the concerns that I've heard from the business community, and this has come from numerous sources, is that we really haven't, as a council or a community, had any updates for a long time from CARES Health. And the concern is with all of the COVID that they thought, a number of people are thinking that they should have, the council should be more informed. They had called and asked me if I had had any conversations. I think there probably had calls from three or four business owners, and I said I hadn't had any correspondence with them at all. And so that's why I had reached out, city administrator Gramm, is to try to get something set up. So I'm pleased to hear that we're going to be moving this forward. That's a very positive comment, and I look forward to that. Additional comments?
Mayor Calvin?
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, there is a board meeting on Wednesday, and I think part of our conversation is, was, you know, about the lease and part of the other, and so I will carry that information forward that was discussed tonight. And I'm glad that this meeting had worked out. There was a in-person meeting that had been scheduled but was working on, but right before the pandemic, and so it was time to have this, have this meeting to make sure everybody was connected. So that's all.
Perfect. I'm glad the meeting happened. Additional discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Swantus?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next to the Community Development Committee report, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Development Committee originally met May twenty sixth, Tuesday, and we talked about the commercial use of public parking, and there was a motion made and sent to the council, and we had an emergency meeting on Friday, May twenty ninth, at noon, and this emergency parking for public property was approved. So I'm not going to read the whole ordinance again. That went into effect this morning at six A M., and I've heard nothing but good things. Had about twelve emails thanking the council and the city for their hard work. I haven't heard any negatives, so if any of the other council people have heard of any of the negative, they can please answer this. But I know Sarah Swedberg and Sean Christensen had some work to do because the street in front of Frida's abuts Highway Twelve, and the state didn't want to barricade that off. So I don't know what Sean did, but he got it to work because the barricades are up, and Frida's Cafe is very happy. So if there's any questions... Steve Fernando has a question.
More of a comment than a question, Rick. I went out to breakfast at Frida's today, and Steve expressed his appreciation to me, and that goes out to the council. So we have one happy business person, him and his wife, with that, our decision to work with a local business. This is for this expanded outdoor, outdoor eating. I also drove around during the lunch hour, and I noticed some of the businesses were really doing quite well, so that was exciting to see. So hats off to the council and appreciate that.
Councilmember Maskey.
I'm just curious, are we getting a lot of interest from businesses to make application for this? I mean, I saw a handful that had lots of tables out today. I'm just curious, are we getting a lot of demand and people applying?
I don't know that answer. Mr. Gramm or Ms. Thompson, one or the other?
Mr. Mayor and city council members, we've received a few applications, and we are expecting a few more to, to come in. Some are on parking lots, which are on their own property, which are just extending their liquor license into the new outdoor area, and, and others are actually for right-of-way or sidewalk, you know, parking spaces. So they're coming in, and we expect a few more.
Additional comments? I, I just have a comment. Are we going to have any staff time to where people could come to city hall and actually fill the stuff out, or do they still have to do everything over the internet? I know we didn't approve that until late, and I know, I know staff was monitoring emails over the weekend, but are we going to try to make it more user-friendly for our businesses? Or are we going to leave it the way we have it?
I guess that's up to the city council if they want to instruct staff to man city hall. The, the last directive that we had was those that could and should work at home, work remote at different sites. You know, technology has been working so far. There's been, you know, probably been a delay in some actions that have had to occur at city hall just because of not being, you know, in person. But I, I don't know that we're, we're behind on issuing any licenses or permits or, you know, or anything of that nature. It seems that the people are finding the ways to interact electronically or over the phone, and they're, they're paying their, their fees electronically. So in, in this particular case, they just have to, I think, go on the website, fill out the information and send it in. There's, there's no cost, so.
Perfect, perfect. Councilmember Maskey.
I was just going to say, I mean, if a business expressed that it is a hardship to do that process, I suppose we could make an exception, or could that not be done? I, I mean, I don't know what kind of circumstances are out there, but we obviously want every business who can take advantage of this ordinance to do so.
I think some of it was probably, you know, the lateness of our meeting on, on, on Friday as well, but I'm pleased to hear that our staff is responding in a timely manner. So I, I don't want to bring our staff back early. That's, that's the administrator's decision, in my opinion, not the council's. He knows the safety of our, our staff best.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Fagerly?
Yeah, I received an email from Dr. Ramstead, and he says this emergency ordinance expires on June fifteenth, and that'll be our next council meeting. So we'll have to decide then if we want to continue this or let it expire. That's going to be administrator's job to give us his opinion.
I believe that it was sixty-one days, if I remember correctly, my conversation with Mr. Scott. So I, I see you turned your mic on there, Mr. Scott. What, what is that date?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I don't remember the specific date, except that it comes after your second meeting in June. So if the council wished to extend that emergency ordinance to allow the temporary signs in the business district, you need to basically renew the ordinance, and you can do that in one meeting as an emergency ordinance. So I think that's planned to be on the agenda on June fifteenth.
Okay. Mr. Gramm?
Yeah, I would say if there's any business that is, is in need of an in-person visit, a telephone call to the, the city clerk's office, you know, should be able to align that. You know, if, if we can get ninety-five percent of the, the work done, we'll do it that way. But we've always been open to meeting at city hall i- in that case, if it can't be done.
Additional comments or questions? The motion has been made to file the minutes. I believe Ms. Thompson, is that correct? Motion to be filed, the minutes, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Swantus?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have a Labor Relations Committee meeting. Councilmember Maskey.
All right, yes, we met on May twenty sixth. It was an all council meeting, and so most were in attendance. We had an informational item on city operations update. You were all there for the most part, so I won't review it all, but we did look at where we were with COVID nineteen staffing levels and the plan of bringing more on, and of course, safety being paramount to doing that. We did hear about Public Works as well as some of our other recreational pieces, and when they were going to come on, that was just informational piece. I will tell you that since this has happened, it actually happened this afternoon, there was noted that when we had questions of the Dorothy Olson Aquatic Center, that we did not take any action on that, and so there are some concerns about when that can open. So this afternoon, I have received several emails about what kind of safeguards would be happening if we were to open the Dorothy Aquatic Center. And I was given all kinds of resources from the CDC, the Minnesota Department of Health, the Red Cross, Minnesota Pool and Aquatic Center plans, and did get an update from Mr. Baumgarn regarding where he was at. They, and, and Britta would have been in attendance to speak to this this evening, but she had another thing to do this evening, but she does mention that they think they could get their certified lifeguards back to be able to do it. They would have a COVID training. They did have a whole set of safeguards in place. I'm feeling a little bit out of place to push that issue this evening without sharing all that information with the council. I know that we have talked about not having a labor committee meeting next week, but I'm thinking we could substitute in the Dorothy Aquatic Center as our main item for that. But I would say if Baumgarn has any comments, I know that a lot of the emails came from him, he wanted to maybe just mention about where we are, the status of the Dorothy Olson Aquatic Center. I don't know if we're... I don't know if we're under the gun to do things quickly, but it sounds like, again, as we've done and all of the rollout of coming back online is that we have safety precautions in place and are following those guidelines. But Mr. Baumgartner, you have any comments you want to make there?
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. We do have a plan in place to open the pool. It's going to be difficult per se because of the six, you have to be six foot away from everyone and that's going to be very difficult to do that in a pool setting and out on the beach or on the deck area. So we do have a plan, we do have the parameters in place about what we would need to do to open. We're just looking for clarity from the council on what type of services should we be able to provide this summer. I look at it budget-wise as well. You know, our operation budget for the pool is right around $240,000 and we bring in a revenue of about $64,000. So if we're looking at budget-wise, there's some things that we could look at it that way, but it also is maybe a little bit of a ripple effect as well. If we don't run the pool, do we run the splash pad then? And with the splash pad, that's city water, not chlorinated water. And so that's also going to be difficult because a lot of people congregate there at the splash pad. So how are we going to be able to control the six-foot social distancing at that point? So there's some ripple effects with if we do close the pool down. Britta's been working hard on this. She's been looking at a lot of what the other pool professionals are doing as well. I do have to say that a lot of pools have closed for the summer, either because of safety reasons or for operational budget savings. So we're kind of still on the fence. We could still, you know, postpone our start date to later on if it's in July, reduce the hours to maybe a one to four type of deal. But that's the other part of it is when the pool's up and running, it's running 24/7. So we're not going to save a whole lot on the operational piece of it when it comes to utilities, but we can save it on the labor piece.
So thank you for the comments there. So you can see it's a bit of a, it's a process issue of when and where and how we would talk about this thing or what we would like to do. City Administrator Grammets.
Yeah. Mayor and City Council, I believe Rob may want to address that there is a problem, a mechanical problem that could potentially delay operations and he would know the more specific details of that and he can maybe explain that. So it's not like we, I guess we want to open tomorrow. You know, we can get to labor because we actually have something we have to fix if I'm not mistaken. So Rob, could you explain that?
Yes, Mayor, member of the council. I was informed today by Gary Manzer that we have a leak in what's called the surge tank. We've learned that once we start filling up the pool, we needed to fill the pool in order for the surface resurfacing to cure underwater. And so what happens with the surge tank is if we get a large amount of rain, if we get a couple inches of rain, it overflows into the gutters or the skimmers and it goes into this tank. And there's a crack in the line and what happens is that doesn't go down the drain fast enough so it could actually back up into the other drain, which is in our mechanical room where our pumps are at. So if we get a huge amount of rain, we could have a serious problem with the water coming back up into our main pump areas inside our maintenance room. So Gary and his crew is going to be working on that, getting a camera to actually find out where that leak is at and how significant that leak actually is.
Thank you both. I think, given the lateness of, I suppose, getting all the information to folks and there seems to be a lot of other complicating factors that maybe we should just move this through labor next week and respond accordingly. So if there's more questions initially here for Rob or City Administrator Grammets on this issue? Again, those are ongoing staffing levels that the city administrator and the department heads have been working on. So that was an informational piece. The other piece, we did go into closed session to talk about union negotiation strategy. Those conversations, of course, in closed session, I'm not going to share those, but the council did have a set of priorities and have given those to the city administrator and the city attorney and HR director. And basically we're in a holding pattern until we hear back from them, at which time I will probably most likely call another closed session. There were no other items that came before the council at the labor committee meeting and so with that I would make a motion to file the minutes.
Motion made by Meski, second by Elvarado. Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Meski?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Flauemen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero needs.
Oh, that motion passes. Next, we have the consideration of Investment and Wilmer Board recommendation. And before we go to that, I'm just going to make an opening comment. I would encourage all council members to listen to their last board meeting. It will be very eye-opening for you and you'll be able to hear what the members of our community think about the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to City Administrator Grammets.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, as you have already probably read the minutes that were received earlier in the council packet, out of those minutes of the Investment and Wilmer Committee, there was a robust discussion about what the direction the city council had offered up to the Investment and Wilmer Committee members and of the options that were present to themselves or presented to themselves that they decided that the concept of doing justice to each of the projects until the money runs out is probably the direction that they were headed at and that the first project that they would like the city council to reauthorize to continue through the design plans and specifications, approval of council and other committees and boards through construction in 2020 was the Swanson Field Project and that had a budget of $2 million. That was in the referendum, the bill authorized by the legislature and in the plan. So they wanted to retain that amount and complete Swanson Field so that is done and ready for next year. I think the underwriting principle that was presented was that to look at projects that could take the next step that didn't involve additional labor, additional utilities, additional costs to the city. And the Swanson Field Project fit that bill. So that would be the recommendation that they are putting forth to the council to get authorization to proceed on Swanson Field. And so just as a heads up, the other two projects, the recreation fields and the event center, were to be discussed at later meetings in the next month or so.
With that, it would take a motion from the council to move their recommendation forward. And so I would stand to see if there was a discussion on that. A lack of a motion will move to the next agenda item.
Mayor Calvin?
Councilmember Nelson.
I would make the motion as recommended by the Investment and Wilmer Board to move forward with Swanson Field.
Second, Schwantes.
Motion by Nelson, second by Schwantes. Councilmember Meski.
I was at that meeting and I can tell you some of the ideas that the council may have floated initially were not where the direction of this group wants to go. The idea of 67% funded projects, there was not an appetite for that. Matter of fact, it was absolutely opposite. They believed that all of the projects should be funded at their full amounts and the council will deal with where to find those dollars at a later time. So understand as we move these projects forward, initially there was not an appetite at the steering committee level to cut these things. However, the message was clearly sent to all of the subcommittees to find priority listings within their projects. And so, but again, this was the only piece that there was unity on that across the board at that particular meeting.
Additional discussion, Councilmember Davis. I saw your hand up. Councilmember Davis? No? Additional discussion. Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, we need to proceed with Swanson Field. My question is, is it 300,000 still there from the city and the capital improvement for the lights?
Mr. Grammets or Mr. Olkens, can one of you answer that question?
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, the 315,000 is still there and there is, the council did approve a contract with Musco Lighting for those lights. And Rob, Parking Director Baumgartner can speak to that too.
I mean, the question was, is the money there? It sounds like the money is there, so is that answer your question, Councilmember Fagerly?
That does. Because, yeah, they're ready to go. They were still looking at sightlines, so they weren't quite sure on the dugouts how deep it was going to go into the ground. They've got alternates, they might not just put that little playground in yet, so, in the concession stand, so. Got to get that one going.
Councilmember Meski.
I wasn't part of the discussion except for when it came to the council. I thought we authorized buying those lights long ago because then we would get a cheaper rate on those lights. Did we not purchase those lights?
Parking Director Olkens? That's what I had remembered as well is that we approved it last year, but Councilmember Olkens?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council did authorize a contract with Musco Lighting at the end of last year and I don't believe, I think that's been put on hold until they were deciding on which field to put them on. And again, that's the information I got from Rob Baumgartner.
Thank you. Yeah, I know that we had a cost savings if we placed that order, so. Additional discussion, Councilmember Meski.
So we didn't order the lights because we didn't know what fields they were going to go on? So the lights that go on the fields, they're going to be different depending on what field they go on? Excuse me because I don't know about lights and putting them on baseball or softball fields.
Yeah, if I said that, I spoke incorrectly or if that's what you heard. I think that they were going to order them last fall before the price increased and so I think that that was what we had the agreement on. As my recollection is, not based on what field they're going to go on, it would just place them after that decision was made.
So I assume the price will be, sorry, I assume the price will be higher now since we didn't place that order? Is that a lost opportunity perhaps?
Mayor, member of the council, we have a purchase agreement with Musco Lighting. That agreement is still in place. We got that done in December. We are just waiting to finalize what still that's going to be on. So it seems like Orange Field will be that primary field. Musco Lighting is chomping at the bit to get those lights here, get them installed. So we're ready to go now with, if this is being approved, we're all set to go.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Flauemen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Meski?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero needs.
That motion passes, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I've got some family things I'm working on here as well, I apologize. City council discussion on elimination of the committee's charter, Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked to have this added to the agenda. Mr. Grammets had brought it forward to us at the December 30th council retreat and there was a lot of discussion that took place there, but no action was taken. Then prior to Mr. Grammets accepting the administrator position on a permanent basis, we all had the opportunity to meet with him and again, this topic came up in our conversation. And I feel out of respect for his proposal and quite frankly, because I think it is a good idea, that I would like to see us move forward addressing the items at the two council meetings per month and to eliminate the four council meetings as it was proposed by our administrator again on December 30th. There are a number of reasons why I support this issue. First one is staff time. We know that staff have to create the agendas, they create the car reports, they spend time in the committee meetings, then the minutes have to be prepared after that and they do that four times for each committee meeting twice a month. And then they come back and create the council agenda, usually using the same car report and they have to attend the council meetings and then the minutes are prepared again. So we do, obviously do that twice a month. But you think of the time that they spend in preparing all those items for the committee meetings just to be redundant again for the city council meetings. Then I also believe that our current process is inefficient. We hash out the topics at the committee meeting only to rehash it out again at the council meeting because there were only four people present to hear the message. And again, I believe that that's a duplication of time and effort. When we read the minutes of the council meeting, that's the second item for me. We all have the information in our council packets. We're all expected to read what's in the packet prior to the meeting. When we read the minutes, I don't believe that it's a good use of time. We've talked about different ways to be able to work around it and there was quite a bit of conversation about that again at the December 30th meeting. Things like let's just summarize the key talking points and just bring the action items forward. But, and I will give credit to Councilmember Meski because I think he does a good job of this, but otherwise we are again, just reading the council minutes. And quite frankly, when a meeting is long as our last finance committee meeting, that's a lot of reading for one council member to have to do. Even the best reader, there were some struggles with it and to know, I mean, absolutely unintentional of any meaning to, but when you have a long meeting, it's just difficult to capture what was said completely. Sometime during the, someone said during the December 30th meeting again, that the only value in reading the minutes is for the public to hear what went on in the committee meeting. So if asked, I believe that the public, the majority of them, would say that they'd rather hear the discussion than listen to the minutes being read. This proposal, I believe, has far greater transparency in that the public is able to hear the whole discussion. The third reason I am proposing this is that I also believe that it's time-consuming for third parties who are attending our committee meetings and our council meetings. If we think of the people that bring projects forward, they may have to go to more than one committee meeting for their project before they're able to bring it to the full council. And we might be paying for their time. It was discussed again in the December 3rd meeting, the labor committee meeting last year in which we had our labor attorney present and he had to come back to review everything all over again with the full council. And I can imagine that Mr. Scott is attending a number of committee meetings and we have him back again, obviously, for our council meeting, he's in attendance. And we're paying for those individuals' time. Baker Tilly represented at the finance committee meeting and came back again for the full council finance committee meeting. And I wonder how many times our EDC has gone from one committee to another on a big project when it could have been done going to the planning commission and then coming to the city council for a decision? and then coming to the city council for a decision. And so I would argue that eliminating the four committee meetings would also expedite projects. And I, quite frankly, don't know any developer that would not jump at, at the idea of being able to move their project more quickly. In, in the past, when we've talked about this, we were told that people don't want to come to the council meetings, but they'll come to the committee meetings. And I think that we can all say that our practice, you know, there were four of us that were new at the time and hadn't gone through the committee structure and, and had a difficult time speaking to that. But I think all of us now, having gone through that for this last bit, know that that really is not a very valid argument. So, probably the most important item for me is that all council members hear the same message at the same time. Again, this is really important to me. We heard it again tonight, that you'll want to listen to the Invest in Wilmer Committee minutes. We were told to listen to the finance committee minutes. It would be beneficial to all of us to hear the same message at the same time. Again, on the December 30th meeting, one council member had said that she doesn't want to have to defend the discussion at the committee meetings and not wanting to, and it was in regard to taking the minutes so that they would be accurate enough to reflect what the conversation was. And, and again, said not wanting to be defensive to protect themselves against the gotcha. Well, if we are all at the table together, then there's no reason to be defensive, because we are all hearing the same message at the same time. And that really leads to my last point, and that is that it's a matter of trust. I believe that the full council meetings will help us to restore trust between council members. I don't think we have an overabundance of that, and, and it's an issue for us. And I think this is one way for us to be able to move forward. We were hoping to be able to have had a conversation with a facilitator to come in. That didn't happen, given the whole COVID-19 situation. But I think that this is a step that we can take forward tonight and, and help us to get through some of those hurdles. So in short, I think this proposal puts forth Administrator Grammets' proposal. At the December 30th meeting, it increases efficiencies for everybody, both internal and external to our organization. It should speed up our process. It'll be more transparent to the public. But most importantly, it should help us to build trust between our council members, rather than erode trust, and hopefully we are able to work better together. So lastly, it works well in other communities, and I think that it would work well here. So, thank you. And with that, I would put forth a motion to do just that.
Okay, listen to them. Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis, was that a second?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded to bring the, the elimination of the committee structure conversation to the table. Our city attorney will be leaving us shortly. He has another item he has to work on this evening, and so he'll be leaving us shortly. So, City Attorney Scott, you can feel free to step aside. Mr. Grammets will brief you on anything that you need to be briefed on.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council, for the discussion meeting.
So we have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Blomman and then Mr. Grammets, I know that that was a recommendation that you had at the meeting on the 30th. You had cited that there were a number of people that, other cities that you had worked in where this worked quite well. And I know that, that this is not something that you're wanting to carry on your own. But after Councilmember Blomman, if you could just make a comment if you are in support of this. I do understand that it's a council decision, and you and I have talked about this before. And so with that, I'll go to Councilmember Blomman, and then Mr. Grammets, if you have some comments you'd like to make. Councilmember Blomman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm certainly great with having the conversation. I think it's a good conversation to have, especially if it's a recommendation of our city administrator, who is newly establishing permanency here. So I think it's something to be discussed. Quick question, or maybe something that can be verified, in terms of the actual motion itself, does it lay out the full, the full nature of the, the new makeup of the meetings? Or is it, is it simply more aimed at abandoning the current system? I'd like to ask that, and then after that, I have another follow-up question or statement.
So the motion would be that the council would address items at the two council meetings each month and eliminate the four committee meetings. Then those four committee meetings being labor, finance, public works, and community development.
Okay, thank you. If I may continue, Mr. Mayor? Okay. You know, I, I, this is a hard one for me, because personally, I like the idea of consolidation and efficiency. I think that's, that's, it's more than just novel. I mean, it's, it's, it's real, being as efficient and effective as, as what we can. And especially for our own personal lives, I know that we all have time constraints and challenges and whatnot. Myself, and I'll just say it flat out, do I like the committee meetings? Do I like, or do I like having all extra meetings? No, I don't like it. However, I, I, it's a tough one, because when we were doing the, the work sessions, I mean, I would have to be hard, hard convinced that we were not going to go back to the, the style and the makeup of the work sessions as they were before, because the fact of the matter is, I would gladly trade what, what we're doing now, the extra meetings, I'd trade that for the five to 11 meetings that we were doing twice a month. Because I felt like by hour four or five, I was about cashed out, just speaking frankly. And I think that my decision-making process by that point in the meeting was compromised. So then the meetings that are, or the topics that are going to be coming up later on in the night, might not get fair, might not get fair here, or fair evaluation by everybody, say if they were considered earlier on in the evening. Also, the second point that I will be addressing, please excuse me for three seconds, I got to address my children. All right, back at it. I've heard, and this is just myself personally, I've heard nothing but good feedback. Now, that might be just the information that I've been made privy to with regard to the committee meetings that I'm at. But I know that we've had some real good, in-depth conversations that likely we wouldn't have time for at a full council meeting, because there's a lot of little peripheral questions that are able to get asked. And then you also, it seems like we have a closer, more detailed view of some of these things that are happening. Like I said, I have nothing against the idea of being as efficient as possible, and being cost-effective, and being effective policymakers. But I will speak on behalf of the committee system in terms of our ability to be a little bit closer into some of the issues that need to be discussed a little bit further. And, you know, I, I was, I think, I think it is fair to, I mean, I feel like sometimes I talk ad nauseam going through the, the public works minutes. It's a, it's a lot to keep straight, and it's a lot to, to digest, as you're hearing. And there's a lot of things that happen at some of the meetings. But I also think, at the same time, if we had to try squeeze all that into a work session, plus all the other stuff, you know, I feel like we kind of already did the job of condensing a couple hours' worth of conversation at the committee level. So am I, like, super hardcore opposed to the idea of going away from it? No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not adamant that it can't happen, or it shouldn't happen, that it's a absolutely terrible idea. But I do tend to still favor the committee structure as, as I feel as though, I feel as though it is working as it is intended, per our city charter and per the intended rank and file and protocol for these issues to be heard, discussed, and working their way up the ladder. And I think that, I think the charter is fairly clear on that. Again, my mind is open to other ideas, but you're going to have to convince me that those other ideas are going to be just as effective. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Councilmember Davis, followed by Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering, is this something we could try for six months and see how it works?
Yeah, that would be a council decision. The council certainly could try that, if they chose to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I, what, what I found when we went to the committee structure was that we got greater detail and greater conversation around a number of various topics. It seemed like there were things that weren't brought up at the full council that we get in the committee, in the committee structure. So, and, and then it's, you, you only have a limited amount of time when you're at, at the council meeting, because there's so much to talk about. And I know we were trying to do two committees, or two, yeah, committees, let's say, at the council meeting, every other one. And I don't know that we gave any of them their commitment due. So I, I kind of, you know, I think I'm gravitating towards the committee structure, because I think there's a little more openness. I don't have a problem with trust with any one of you. I believe that we each have what's best, what the best interest of the city is. And, and that's where I'm coming from. I don't feel like anyone is trying to undermine anything. And I, and anybody can go to any of the committee meetings. These are not off-limits to any one of us, and the door is always open. So right now, I like the way the, the structure is working, personally. I think we're about six months into, left to the, to the election year. And if, at that time, the new council wants to retry it, I would encourage them to do it. But I'm, I'm happy where we're at right now. Thank you.
Mr. Grammets, I had two council members raise their hands, and so I was going to go to you, but I, your comments at this time.
I would be more than willing to hear the rest of the council members before I make any comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Osmos, followed by Mesky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I need to know kind of what that structure would look like. Are we going back to the five o'clock work session? Or is, and I know we can decide to do it however we would like to. But if we went at six o'clock, starting at six, then it wouldn't get too late. And we could go through each one of the committees. When we did it with the work session, like Councilmember Alvarado said, when we just did two, we were supposed to do two per council meeting and a work session, it, it's like they were never laid out that way. It was never clear exactly what was going to be getting discussed. If we had all four at each one, at each council meeting, then, to me, it's clear then of what's going to get discussed. But then I fear we won't have the time. Again, like Councilmember Alvarado said, I do like the, the more comfortable atmosphere of the committee meetings. It's just a little bit more open discussion. I think of some of the big discussions, the public works, public safety, like the things out at the, at the brush site, how we were going to do winter parking. Those were, those were long discussions that we hashed out through ideas, that I, I, sometimes I don't know if we'd have been able to do that at the council table. It just seems like it's a little bit more restricted. But I also, I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. Grammets, how other communities do it, how it works, and how there's enough time to have the discussions like we have at the committee level.
Councilmember Mesky. I think the administrator would like to wait and hear from the council. I will, I will make some comments as well, probably before the administrator speaks. Councilmember Mesky.
Murray and Groundhog Day. I apologize. It seems like we have done this over and over again. And the arguments are the same arguments over and over again. I am not opposed to it, of course. But we've talked about the pros and cons of this several times, and we have opted at this point to go to the committee structure because of the fault of the, of the structure we had previously. There'll be three new people joining this council, and when you have your organizational meeting, that is, I think, an appropriate time to switch. I think you can try to see what that might look like. Councilmember Osmos' idea, maybe that needs to be more hammered out of what that could actually look like. But we've done all these things on trial basis every time. We'll do this and check in, do it in that and check in. I can tell you, City Administrator Grammets shared what he was talking about. And if I recall correctly, in our conversations, it was, these, these are the ways that we can shorten meetings, and maybe not all of the council members have taken those to heart. Some have, and that, and that, I think, has shortened the meetings. But I think he, he didn't give a directive. He laid out, these are the difficulties that we have with our system. And maybe not everybody has taken those and ran with them, but some have. I can tell you what makes a longer meeting is bringing these items up later in the meeting, and now we're, we're here a lot longer talking about them. I think we've hashed this out. And, and I'm in favor of finishing out this term using the committee structure. We can burden the next council with the committee structure, or the former open meeting things we had before, if that's what you wish. But I think this is just out of the blue and unnecessary, and I'm waiting for a new idea on it, because it sounds like things we've already hashed out.
Just some discussion. I would just add a couple comments. Administrator Grammets brought this up to us when we were going through a transition time. He'd been with us for quite some time. It was the end of December, and he was trying to lay out a guidance of how we, as a council, could function, in his opinion, more effectively. And that's what he was trying to do. And I will tell you that every city administrator that we have had since I've been the mayor, Charlene Stevens, Larry Cruz, Mike McGuire, Ike Holland, and Brian Grammets have all said we should go to this type of a structure. Every one of them, in totality, have said that this is the best way to do business. This is the way other cities do business. Now, the conversations, if you happen to be one of the council members that sit on that committee, and you have that lengthy discussion and that spirited exchange, if you will, back and forth, you get to hear everything. But if you're one of the four and the mayor, you don't get to hear that unless you're going to invest the time to listen. Now, I was very fortunate in the fact that Rob had told me about the report that was given to labor. And so I listened to that hour and eight-minute meeting, and I'm glad I did. But I don't listen to every single meeting, and I'm not sure if all of you do. But if we're going to be informed, and we're going to all have the same information to make the same decisions, then we should all be hearing the same information at the same time. I've talked to Mr. Grammets about this. We didn't get the information before. I mean, consistently, we would hear from staff. If we had the committee structure, then we would give you this information, but we're not going to give it to you because we don't have the committee structure. Well, Mr. Grammets can set that up and say... Well, Mr. Grammets can set that up and say, "We're gonna get this information, we're gonna give it all to the council at the same time," and Mr. Grammets can provide that leadership and, and make that happen. Um, you know, um, it was a pet peeve of mine, and, and many of you heard me say that many, many times, just because we have the work session doesn't mean you can't present information. You still could. So, um, you know, I think when we, you know, we went through a lot of administrators, and that's not a good thing as a council. And probably part of that is because of this process that we have that's so cumbersome. And, you know, if we would've had one of the administrators say, "I think you should go this direction," but every administrator we've had has said that we should change this process. And, um, we can kick the can down the road, that's fine. Um, I believe it was, I believe it was being brought up out of respect, respect for Mr. Grammets because he had brought it up, saying something that he suggested. You're right, Councilmember Mesky, he did not order us to do that, he gave it as a guideline. But, um, I think there's ways that we could be much more effective, much more transparent. Um, and I do agree that, um, some of the, some of the meetings I hear, there's, there's, there's more information in them, but we could get that same information with the Administrator saying that this is the information the council needs. I think one of the things, the way we redid our car reports, I think is a tremendous move forward. Um, it says right in the front what staff is asking us as a council to consider. I mean, that was one of the recommendations that was made by Mr. Grammets, and he, and he's put that in place, and it's been very successful. And so, um, so I think having the council get the information all at the same time is, is, uh, is, would, would be very valuable and, uh, something that we should consider. So, Councilmember Mesky.
First, I don't, I don't believe that, that whether we have work sessions or committees is a reason that the city administrator will stay in Wilmer or not. I don't know if you were insinuating that or not, but I, I don't see that as, as an issue. I mean, we are talking about issues here. Um, that robust conversation that you talk about happening at committee structures will not happen in the work session, it just does not have time. Um, there is a trust issue. Uh, I think, uh, City Administrator Grammets also pointed out some of those issues that the council should be working on, and we haven't done those. I would say let those things take their course and see what happens with those types of activities, because for me, I don't need to sit on the two other committees that I do not sit on. Um, I trust that those things are being handled. Uh, whenever I've asked a question, it's, it's somebody said, "Yeah, we did address that," and then I go, "Thank goodness, somebody did." Um, I think this is very unnecessary, but, um, I've said that before. Um, I'm an advocate, it wasn't broken, uh, you don't need to fix it.
Um, I would just say that, uh, um, I think it may have had, uh, in conversation I had with Mr. Holland, I think it may have had something to do with his decision to leave. Um, if you remember his interview, I believe, as a matter of fact, I know you were at that. Um, that is one of the things that he had a complaint about in Chillicothe, is the fact of how much time the council was requiring him to be at meetings, and he liked the idea that we were going to the work session, and that was one of the things he found attractive here. Uh, he mentioned that to me many times when the council was talking about going away from the work session and back to the committee structure, that he had concerns about that. Um, so, I'm not speaking to Mr. Grammets, but I can speak, uh, in firsthand conversations I had with, uh, Mr. Holland in regards to that, so. With that, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Um, I'm a little bit, I think, surprised at the timing of this one, um, with this request. So, I was a proponent for work sessions when we, um, um, switched to them, and for whatever reason, they didn't work. Whether it was the Administrator, whether it was staff, whether it was us, I'm not sure, but we struggled with not getting information, we struggled with the timeframe. Um, we went from every Monday night to how we were gonna do that. Um, I am not, and there's a lot of different structures that cities have, from having two council members be, um, um, not a committee kind of thing. I think there's a lot of different things we can look at. I just don't see that this is the timeframe that we should be doing this in. Um, we have a few months left before we lose some council members. I think our meetings are difficult enough right now, um, with the structure that we have. I think staff is doing a good job getting us information. I think the car reports are great. I think there is an efficiency there. I would agree with Councilmember Mesky that I think I'm, I, I really would like to see this full council deal through some of the, the issues that I think are bringing the, this, uh, structure forward, and maybe we have to commit to doing that, um, uh, with, with the type of teleconference that we're doing now. I do not see how we can get through our meetings with the amount of information that's there, and, you know, we have different committees that meet, or different committees outside of the committee structure, you know, that we get information from too, and so, you know, um, I, it, I respect the timeframe, but I do think in a certain way, the, the committee structure creates more of an efficiency for the, the council time and the, and the information, and I think perhaps it's the trust issues that we need to work on. And, um, respect the committee structure, and if we wanna look at something else that then, after we have new council members and a new year, I'm not opposed to that, but I think we need a structure before we go away from one.
There's some discussion. Councilmember Maiden seconded to consider the process of eliminating the committee structure. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am I, am I recalling, um, I thought it was, uh, the directors of, of the various departments that they preferred to have a, um, the committee structure also, um, and allowed us to, um, you know, um, hear what they had to say, be, um, you know, be able to answer, ask questions of them, uh, easier, easier, and that sort of thing. And I, and I also think that we gotta keep in mind, we're, uh, we're as, uh, the regional city, we're a city of twenty-one thousand, I believe, uh, and we're gonna find out how big we are, uh, in the, in the future here, but, um, I think some of the large, large that we have, it doesn't lend itself to some of the, um, maybe the, the work session, the, the full council. I don't know, I, I think there's, um, I, I think we gotta look at that piece too. We're not, we're not a small town. We're, we're a, a, a small city, so I wanna keep that in mind also.
Well, the city of Apple Valley's over sixty thousand, uh, they don't have, have a committee structure. The city of Burnsville's over sixty thousand, they don't have a committee structure. Um, so, I mean, I don't think that's to do with the size of the city, I think it has more to do with the function. Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I think that's exactly it. It has to do with a trust or lack of trust amongst the council members. I think a lot of, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, I mean, he's going to speak here in a moment, but I think a lot of City Administrator Grammets' time with the committee structure is taken up by comments from people that weren't at the meeting wanting to know whether they missed or hearing things in a different way or something else. Those would be gone if we'd actually trust the people that are in those other committees to do what they were supposed to be doing in those other committees. Like I said, I don't have a problem personally with it, so that's why this whole thing seems ludicrous to me. But if you don't trust, uh, somebody else on one of those other committees, I can see how that is a problem. That's why I thought we were going to address the trust issues that were very evident, but apparently, if we switch to the system, I don't think that makes that part go away.
There's no comments.
Uh, Mayor and City Councilmembers, um, every city strikes out and sets up its government as it deems appropriate, and you can find some communities that have the committee system. Uh, I don't know of many that have the work session. I mean, I've worked in cities where we'd have a work session once or twice a year on one major topic that's coming before the, the city. Uh, that's the only time they have a work session, you know, maybe even, you know, budget work session, but, uh, any system will work. The question for an administrator is, how well does it work? And all I was attempting to say, uh, you know, last December, was when you take, let's take a, a two-hour finance meeting, and then you transfer that to the city council, and it takes another two hours to go over them same topics because half of the city council wasn't there. That, uh, that to me is, is a problem just begging to be solved, because I'm trying to be a, a, a solving type of person. How do we become more efficient, more effective? And, uh, it's, it's not a, a conclusion that one way is bad and one way is good. I'm just seeing the work of the staff to prepare the committee meetings and the council meeting, and, and quite honestly, I've never seen anything like how Wilmer is set up, uh, before. Uh, as, as the mayor mentioned, you have sixty thousand population communities, the council comes together for forty-five minutes to an hour and gets all their work done, and they go home. And, and how, how does that work? It's because of, of maybe for every hour they're at the council meeting, they spend six hours going through the agenda and reading and asking questions of staff before you get to the council meeting. And then once you're there, you're ready to, to act, and, uh, Wilmer, I think, has taken a different kind of position on that. They save up their questions, and then at the council meeting, they ask them, and at some point in time, you know, staff doesn't have the answer, which then puts staff in a bad position and also puts the council in a position of, "I don't have enough information, how do I make that decision?" And so, even though the committee structure is there, it only involves half the council, and so there's a repetitive system to it. Now, I will say that when I, I made those recommendations, there was, uh, four or five meetings in a row that were pushing three to three and a half hours at the council meeting, okay? And then we went through maybe a January, February, and March when, you know, some were getting done in an hour and, and things were really clicking, and not necessarily because of the complexity of the issues, maybe there just wasn't as many of them, but things were going fairly good as far as timing, and then we started seeing that the, the finance committee was gonna meet, and, and then there were four members of the council who said, "Well, we wanna hear what's going on too," and so now we're having finance and joint city council meetings, and then we're having labor and joint city council meetings, you know, closed sessions and things of that nature. And so I'm sitting there in my mind going, "How do you look at that?" There seems to be a, a desire on some members of the council to, to be at important meetings, but that's not how the system is set up here. It's, it's, this four people make that decision, and if you trust them when it gets to the council, it should be a short discussion. You've worked it out at the committee level, motion second on the road, but that's not what happens. And so all I'm saying is, is, you know, it can work in some communities, it can work with city council personalities, and, and maybe it's, quite honestly, it's because there's nine, you know, the mayor and eight council members when, you know, historically you see five city council members. It's almost half as many questions. If everybody had, had a question, you only got five people. Here, you've got nine people, and maybe that's part of this whole process too, is that it will take longer because there's more members on the council. Then you look at Minneapolis, and I, could you imagine Minneapolis working with the system that we have in Wilmer? I, I can't remember, but there's, there's, there's gotta be, what, twenty-three, thirty-two people on the Minneapolis city council meeting? It's a large body of people, and there's no way they could have council meetings and answer all twenty-some people's questions, you know? Uh, it, it, you know, it'd be eight hours of, of council meetings, so, I, I, there's, all I was, uh, hoping to point out was, were there some things we could adjust? And, uh, and, and part of it, you know, was the, the, the trust factor between the city council, because there, there seems to be, uh, somebody always wondering what the other council members are doing, and, and are we getting all the information? And then there's a lack of trust, and so, uh, if you all get the information at one time, there's no lack of trust. You all received it at the same time. You can, you can discuss it, but if staff does its job properly, we've answered all those questions and we've given you all that information. And I'm gonna say, you know, from my perspective, there's been times when I wished I seen more information in the, uh, action forms. There, there, there has been, uh, and, uh, I've been, you know, working with the department heads to say, "We need all the financial, we need, you know, all the history so that they can make a decision." But we don't wanna make a novel out of this information either. We don't need twenty-four pages. We have to do the same thing that we're asking some of the committee chairs to do, is put bullets down, get the ideas, get the ideas on paper, but don't hide it in a paragraph. For me, you want information, you want easily identified information, and you want your questions answered before you get to the city council. And, uh, I've been trying to, you know, help staff work in that direction, but on the other hand, uh, you know, whoever's in, in, in my office, uh, currently, will deal with whatever system the city council deems appropriate, and that's just the way life is. Uh, if, if you have a way that you want to operate, then that's how things will operate. Uh, there's no magic to this.
Thank you for your comments, uh, City Administrator Grammets. I, I think you, you bring up a good point, and, um, you know, these cities where they are having, um, you know, the, the, the mayor Savage is a good friend of mine, Janet Williams down there, and she boasts in the fact that, uh, she's never had a council meeting go over an hour. Um, and so, they don't have the committee structure, they don't have work sessions, they don't have anything like that. But I also agree with some comments that have been made, that it is a trust issue, and, um, there are some of us that need more information than others, um, and that causes a problem. Um, I, I, I speak, uh, fully for this, simply because all of the administrators I've worked with have said that this is an issue in Wilmer. Um, and, uh, so that's why I speak in favor of it. Um, and, you know, we're hearing that some people are saying it's not a trust issue, um, but, um, I would challenge that, that there's a huge trust issue on this, on this council. Um, and that makes it very difficult for our staff and increasingly difficult for our administrator. Our administrator's job is to administer the city in the best way that they can to have the most successful organization that they can. And every administrator that has been here has told me the same issue, uh, that this council has, and it's trust. And, um, and until that gets resolved, um, by losing three council members isn't gonna make the trust issue go away. Um, and we're, we're gonna have to at some point decide that, as the administrator said, if you wanna trust the committee process, trust the committee process. If you wanna trust the council process, trust the council process. But pick one and don't jump in the middle, because all we're doing is putting our administrator and our staff between two wedges, and they can't win for losing, and that's a problem. With that, Councilmember Osmos, followed by Mesky, I guess that must've struck her.
Osmos, followed by Mesky, followed by Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, personally, uh, whether you wanna call it trust, I think I, I'd probably call it, uh, control on my part, in that, uh, that I like to know information. Like you said, some people need more information. Um, I, the reason that- Um, I, the reason that I would like the full council is I like to have all the information, because then I feel very comfortable and confident in my vote. Um, and I suppose you can look at that and say that's trust, because I guess I'm putting my trust into the committee structure, that they've, uh, they've vetted it, and they trust their judgment. Um, but I do like having the information. And that's just me personally. Um, and I know it would be, as far as when we would implement this or some kind of a change, I can see where, um, the council members that are leaving are just like, you know, I'm not, no lame ducks here, posting out with it the way it is. But personally, I would like to have some experienced council members do the transition, because you know what questions need to get asked. And to me, that's a better, um, i- i- better way to gauge if it will be successful. Because you will know, um, the kind of information you've had before. You will know, um, what kind of questions need to get asked in, um, instead of three new ones. And so I, so that to me, if we don't start it until January, um, I don't think that's, uh, that's a fair transition.
Councilmember Mesky, followed by Plowman.
I, I, I don't want to hit, you know, shoot the dog, the horse again. I know it's, uh, it's dead. But, um, I would imagine all of those previous administrators with the committee structure saw the issues that were going on with trust, and that's why they cited it. We, I was on the committee structure first, and we switched over to the work session. So I have seen that. And the trust issues didn't go away. Oh, everybody hears everything? Oh, no, no, because then it was, we don't trust on getting all the information from the staff either, because you're getting more of the questions we got when we were in the committee structure. So it's, it's never going to go away until you deal with the baseline issue. And so, Julie, if we, we switch it, I don't want to call you directly, but if we switch it now, it's, it's still not gonna get to that core, um, central piece of, how do you establish and trust in this situation? And so to me, switching how you're doing a meeting, it, it really isn't gonna get to that issue. Um, and I never said there wasn't any trust issues on this council. There certainly is. I'm put in the middle of several kinds of conversations often. Um, I think everybody strives to do what's best for the city. Um, but sometimes, um, people strive to find the perfect, the perfect decision, and they need to gather as much information to make that perfect decision. Well, there is really no such thing as a perfect decision. You make the decision with what you've got, the best information you've got, and you make that decision. And I will tell you, because I worked under both systems, I felt like the decisions I made on the committees I was on, I had that information enough to make that decision. And I trusted that the people that were on those other committees I didn't sit on had that information to make that decision. So if I was ever going to go against a decision that was brought forward by another committee, I had better have some great questions to ask, because I wasn't part of that conversation. And, but I had, they had the same best intentions that I did. I assumed that, and I will continue to assume that. But I don't think we're gonna solve the issue by shifting a format of how we conduct business. Um, the committee structure, I think, works. I feel very comfortable with the two committees I sit on, that I have enough information to make decisions. Um, when we were in the previous work session piece, I never felt as if I had enough information on any of the topics of any of the areas. So at least I'm batting fifty percent instead of zero.
Oh, I guess my mic was on. Um, Councilmember Plowman.
No, I, uh, a hot mic, that's a good thing, because then we know we're getting legitimate here, eh? Um, I, I'm not gonna say the, the trust word again, but I mean, I just did. And if, if one person says that, or alludes to the fact or whatever, something about trust, then there's trust issues. The common denominator here, uh, is personalities, not procedure. I'm not gonna change a procedure because the com- because the common denominator is something else. That would be wrong. Um, I, I, I fully take to heart the comments made by the city administrator. Um, and I believe that he's definitely onto something when it comes to, uh, hierarchy, organization, protocol, and procedure and all of that stuff. And when it comes to working relationships of the city council, the council members. But again, uh, I think it's disingenuous, uh, of us to, uh, to, to allude to the fact that the, the common denominator of the inefficiencies, uh, here would happen to be our specific, um, our specific means of conducting meetings. Nah, that, your problems will just shift to another, shift to another area. It's inevitable, it's happened before, I watched it. Thanks.
Okay, I think we're ready to call the question. Councilmember Fager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think everyone knows I like the committee system. Um, trouble with the big system is, some of us get lost in it. When you're intimate with four people and a department head, you can ask questions. Or for myself as a chairman, I'm not afraid to call on a member and hasn't said anything, just to see if they have an opinion. We're in the big, uh, eight of us. Well, some never say anything. And I'll agree, I'm, I'm one of them, because I'm not a talker. But intimate setting, I'm not afraid to talk or try to get other people to say something. And, you know, you, you said these administrator names. Other than, uh, Brian, what are the other ones doing? I don't think any of them are in city administration right now. So they can say, oh, the trust factor. I trust everyone on the council. I don't always agree with them. But I like the committee system.
Okay, I'm ready to call the question, if, uh, if the council are ready. So motions are made to go back to the committee structure. Um, and, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Davis. Aye. Alvarado.
No.
Osmus?
No.
Plowman?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Bakerly?
No.
Maskey?
No.
Chantis?
Yes.
Two eyes, six knees.
And that motion fails.
Okay, can I have a clarification? Didn't, didn't you say the motion was to go back to committee structure? You said to, which to me then meant to stay with the committee structure.
Yeah, the motion was to eliminate the committee structure was what the motion was. Is that not how I stated it?
No.
Ms. Thompson, uh, do re-roll call. Uh, both the administrator and, uh, the, uh, Ms. Councilmember Osmus are saying that I did not state it correctly. Uh, City Clerk Thompson, please recite what the motion should be. Uh, that was my error.
Okay. The motion is to address items at council meeting only and eliminate committees.
Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Could you please repeat that, the motion again?
Certainly. The motion was to address all items at council meetings only and eliminate committees.
I don't want to eliminate the committee, so I'm gonna say no. Is that the way to read that?
Correct. Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
No.
Nelson?
Sorry, no.
Bakerly?
No.
Maskey?
No.
Chantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eyes, five knees.
Did you call on Councilmember Mesky? I didn't hear it.
I did, yes.
Thank you.
Still no.
Good thing I didn't have a mic there, Councilmember Plowman. Um, council member announcements, starting with Councilmember Fager.
Um, there will be no community development meeting next week.
Councilmember Mesky.
I believe there will be a community, there will be a labor meeting unless, I've seen Ms. Beckman is still on the line to talk about the Dorothy Aquatic Center if it needs to be. If that can wait, we will not. So I guess I'm a little up there, because that was an item that came up this evening.
We can certainly have a meeting on the eighth to discuss the pool.
Then we will be meeting at, uh, six fifteen on the eighth. Councilmember Chantis.
Uh, so this is, uh, council member announcements rather than council meeting? No, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, lost my spot on the agenda. Um, I do actually want to give a shout out, and I want to shout out to our police department. We are so fortunate to have a very professional force that, um, is community-minded, has strong community relations, and is ju- they do their work so professionally. And we know how tough that job is right now. And I would ask people that when you see our law enforcement officials, that you give them a kudos and thank them for what they do, because we see what it would be like if we didn't have them. So, thank you to them.
Councilmember Davis.
I don't have anything today.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we had a glorious time yesterday celebrating the, uh, class of twenty twenty. It was a great, um, parade, uh, that the seniors were able to, um, participate in. It was fun to see the, the joy on their faces, and, uh, I, I greatly enjoyed that. Um, I know that I'm a broken record, but, uh, the food shelves, if you need something from the food shelf, please contact them. Three two zero two three five twenty-six forty-one. Again, that's three two zero two three five twenty-six forty-one. Second Harvest, eight hundred three six five zero two seven zero. There, eight hundred three six five zero two seven zero. Remember the census, it's still, we still need to have you be counted. And, um, the, if you're counted, that means more dollars from the federal government are going to come to our community. And less money may come out of our pockets to, um, fund programs. So keep that in mind. And, uh, and I think it's important that we remember that a better world begins with each of us. Um, and, um, and we have to approach you with kindness. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Chantis.
I would just also like to say congratulations to the, uh, graduating class of twenty twenty. It looked like they had a great parade. Um, I would encourage you to, um, patronize our restaurants that now have seating outside and enjoy a wonderful meal out in the beautiful outdoors. And, um, shop local. We need to, uh, we need to get through this. That's it.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, kudos to everybody on the council regarding the emergency meeting and helping out our local businesses, um, doing whatever we could. Uh, and I know that it had been talked about and talked about and talked about, what can we do, what can't we do? Uh, but I applaud each and every one of you. I wish that I could have been there. I mean, I knew y'all would do the right thing. I wish I could have been there to, uh, take part in that vote officially. Uh, but y'all have my support. I appreciate you doing that. The business community appreciates you doing that. The citizenry also appreciates that. Um, so thank you. Uh, we will, we will prevail, we will get through this. We need to continue supporting local businesses, as has been said. Uh, if we want to have those businesses here, we need to support them. Um, and then, uh, just so that we don't have to go back around, uh, Public Works, Public Service, we'll meet, or Public Safety, sorry, we'll meet, uh, on the third, five P M via teleconference. The agenda is currently posted. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Um, I just have to say, I need to take the opportunity to say I'm thankful to live in Wilmer. Um, I think we live in a great area, our whole region. Um, it is great to see how we're working together and shopping local and with that. And, um, the things that are going on in Minnesota, I think, are difficult. And I think it speaks very loudly to the things that we can do in our community to support both our community and our state. So, and with that, I'll just finish. We will have a finance committee meeting on Thursday, um, at five o'clock. And the agendas were sent out, um, previously, and it's in the Dropbox.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will just make one comment at the end of the meeting here. Um, I think that if there's one thing that we heard tonight from our administrator, it was that we need to, if we're staying with the committee structure, which we voted to do, is trust the committees, and when those items come before the council, to move those items quickly through the council. And, uh, so that was the unanimous, or not the unanimous vote, that was the majority vote of the council. Um, the other thing is, and, uh, this was the piece that I wanted to pull into that, is now that we have voted that way, we as a council have to unite and stand behind that. Um, you know, I hear a lot of the coffee shop talk of, um, well, so-and-so and so-and-so voted one way, but I didn't vote that way, so I don't support that. After the vote's taken, the vote is done, move forward, get it over with. And so that's how we're gonna start building trust and how we're going to get this, uh, this, uh, council back together. The other thing I would like to do is I'd like to instruct the city administrator to get ahold of our facilitator and see if there's a time that she can get, uh, the sooner the better, to get a meeting together to where we can have the conversation as a full council. It was recommended a number of times by a number of different council members. And so I would, uh, ask that, uh, that we get that done. And if you can get some dates for us to see, uh, the sooner the better we can get together to have that conversation. And I do agree, uh, with a number of council members that said, you know, if we have to do it in this format, that's the way we should do it. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of them. Back in. Alvarado. By Mesky, second one by Alvarado. We are adjourned.